Miguel Ortega, Miguel es un candidato al Consejo de la Ciudad de Tucson, Ward 1. Su padre era un bachero del Rio Sonora. Llegó a los Estados Unidos como un brasero para trabajar en las áreas de Arizona y California. Después de eso, se dedicó a la universidad trabajando en oficinas, cafés y restaurantes. Tuvo un doctorado en artes finas en la U of A y luego completó varios cursos de graduación en la universidad en las áreas de historia y ciencias políticas. Y durante cinco años fue el jefe de personal para el miembro del Consejo Karen Ulrich mientras trabajaba con el oficio de Ward 3. Supervió los esfuerzos para apoyar las empresas locales. Ha trabajado profesionalmente durante los últimos 30 años como trabajador social y consejero en las áreas de adicción, prevención de grupos de gangos y prevención de embarazos adolescentes. También ha trabajado con prisioneros que recuperan de la adicción dentro de la cárcel de Pima County en el sur de Tucson, con agencias de prevención y en Access Tucson con jóvenes que defienden la literatura de los medios. actualmente es el vicepresidente de la Asociación de Barrios de Ironwood Ridge. Vamos a darle una buena bienvenida a los demócratas de Tucson. Miguel, el piso es tuyo.
Muchas gracias, Joseph, y gracias, Michael, Brian, por la flexibilidad y ayudarme a presentar a este grupo honrado y distinguido de personas. No es mi primera vez que presento a este grupo, solía ser en persona, recuerdo esos días. Y el trabajo que todos ustedes hacen como demócratas es increíble. Y estoy muy afortunado de ser parte de esta presentación hoy. Y quiero saludar a todos los que también están uniendo. Quiero comenzar reconociendo la importancia de hoy, el 16 de junio. Muy importante, no solo para la comunidad afroestadounidense, sino para todos nosotros como Tucsonanos, como estadounidenses. Es algo, creo que es el primer día reconocido federalmente. Eso no significa que Tucson no haya estado discutiendo y reconociendo este día durante muchos años. Recuerdo estar en Kennedy Park y unirme a los demás por eso. Fui organizador de la comunidad, y estoy muy orgulloso de eso. He sido organizador de la comunidad durante la mayor parte de mi vida adulta. Muy orgulloso del trabajo que he hecho electorando a demócratas. Siempre durante mis discursos, incluso más allá de los discursos, siempre hablo de cómo las campañas que hemos ganado son plenas. Digo a mi hijo de 13 años, que hemos ganado muchas campañas como organizadores de base en nuestra comunidad. No todas las campañas son electorales, ¿verdad? La gran mayoría de las campañas que luchamos como progresistas no son electorales. Y estoy muy feliz de decir que he trabajado junto a gigantes, junto a personas realmente increíbles. Y hemos ganado la gran mayoría de esas campañas que hemos luchado. Así que mi experiencia en la organización de mi comunidad es algo muy importante para mí, lo estoy muy orgulloso de. Y especialmente sobre el hecho de que pueda trabajar con algunos gigantes. Así que lo que me gustaría hacer hoy es proporcionarte un poco de razones por qué estoy corriendo por el oficio de Ward 1. Qué me separa de los incumbentes. Y tengo una lista muy grande que me gustaría pasar paso a paso para discutir exactamente eso. Por qué siento que necesitamos un cambio en Ward 1. Antes de empezar eso, lo que me gustaría hacer es reconocer a mi oponente. Somos amigos, hemos trabajado juntos en muchas cosas en el pasado. Somos ambos organizadores de la comunidad. Respeto mucho a Lane. Hemos hecho muchas cosas, volviendo a 2010 aproximadamente, tal vez incluso antes, a fines de los 90s tal vez. Y así no tengo nada personalmente contra mi oponente. Me gusta mi oponente, respeto a mi oponente, no estoy de acuerdo con la perspectiva global de mi nombramiento. No estoy de acuerdo con la visión para Ward 1 y la visión de Tucson que tiene mi oponente. Tenemos abiertos en diferentes enfoques. ¿Por qué estoy corriendo? ¿Por qué me he puesto en el lugar? Primero de todo, mi esposa me dijo que estaba bien. Le pedí permiso primero. Y estaba pensando, ella probablemente va a decir no en caso de que pueda volver a mantener mi larga barba fea y ver algunos de los reruns de Walton. No sé si ustedes, ¿quién recuerda los Waltons, verdad? Los Waltons es increíble. Recuerdo como un niño en los 70s viendo eso. Y los Waltons, eso fue un programa realmente superprogresista sobre trabajadores en Virginia del Oeste, ¿verdad? Así que estaba feliz viendo eso con una gran barba. Y de repente, los gente comenzaron a hablar sobre posiblemente correr contra el oponente. Discutimos el hecho de que si nos metemos de nuevo, no queremos dividir el voto como hicimos la última vez. Pero hablé con Sammy Amid, quien corrió contra nosotros la otra vez. Y él dijo, hey Miguel, no estoy corriendo, hombre, te apoyaré si te metes. Y así hablamos con otros gente que estaban en diferentes campiños hace cuatro años. Y dijo Miguel, ¿sabes qué? ¿Por qué no te vas adelante y corres? Te estarán detrás de ti. Así que cuando tomé esta información a Marisela, en realidad primero dije, ¿puedo correr como un niño? Y ella me dijo, Miguel, si todo el mundo está unido, si podemos reunir a todas las personas que fueron divididas hace cuatro años, cariño, deberías hacerlo. Así que toqué mi barba fea y dije, está bien, voy a ir adelante y deshacer esto y mantener un poco de ello y voy por ello. Así que estaba como un niño en Navidad cuando mi esposa me dio permiso de correr, ¿está bien? Estamos corriendo debido al hecho de que han habido tantas campañas que hemos ganado y sentimos que hay una necesidad de cambio y sentimos que, y esta es la cosa más importante, chicos, sentimos que los residentes de Ward 1 no están siendo representados. No están siendo representados bien, necesitan ser representados. Y eso pasa por todos los campiños que hemos encontrado. Los líderes de los barrios están preocupados por la falta de representación. La comunidad empresarial está preocupada por no ser representada. Las uniones son líderes y Rank and File, están muy preocupados de que no están siendo representados por los incumbentes. Así que hay muchos gente y estoy de acuerdo, estoy de acuerdo en que el oficio de Ward 1 no está siendo representado. Vamos al primer tema. Choya y 36 Desarrollo. Como muchos de ustedes pueden saber, había un zonaje en esa área, en Choya y 36. Es una área hermosa, espacio abierto, y fue zonado para que solo unas pocas casas fueran permitidas por la casa. Los residentes de Choya y 36 lucharon muy duro para tener esa condición en lugar de ese zonaje, ¿está bien? Decadas atrás. Sé que la mayoría de ustedes todos pertenecen a las asociaciones de barrios, ¿verdad? Y todos sabemos cuán difícil es ese trabajo, ¿verdad? Así que esa fue una condición que los residentes fueron al mán y consejo y dijeron, queremos esa condición. A un paso adelante, unos años después, el incumbente fue a los residentes y dijo que el dueño querría rezonar esa área y hacer que haya clústeres de casas en cada casa. Y así vamos a rezonar o remover una condición. Los residentes del barrio de desarrollo del lado occidental resonantemente, prácticamente unanimamente, el 99% de los residentes en esa área dijo, miembro del consejo, no, no queremos eso. Queremos tener el mismo zonaje. Y si el dueño quiera desarrollar esa área con ese zonaje, no ideal, pero nos gustaría al menos mantener el mismo zonaje. El miembro del consejo, según su oficio, dibujó esa área. Y según lo que los residentes dijeron, la gran mayoría dijo, no, eso no es lo que queremos. Había varias reuniones de comunidad, reuniones de contencioso. En una de las reuniones, el incumbente dijo algo con el efecto de no representar que su oficio no representa la demografía de la gente que estaba allí. Mucha gente se ofendió con eso. Hay un par de gente que se manifestó y dijo, nosotros como mexicanos estadounidenses estamos en acuerdos con el resto de los gente aquí, que suceden ser afroestadounidenses, blancos, la demografía completa y todos estamos de acuerdo que no queremos este rezonaje, esta condición mudada. Así que eso fue problemático en sí mismo para el incumbente usar ese lenguaje, para discutir, para hablar de esa manera a sus constituidores. Pero lo más perturbador es que el incumbente fue adelante y removió esa condición. Así que había muchos residentes enojados. Hasta hoy, hay muchos residentes enojados. No sienten que las acciones del miembro del consejo reflejan lo que querían en esa comunidad. Fue simplemente una promesa rompida. Y hay un par de cosas que son muy problemáticas con eso. Y estoy liderando esto porque esto es probablemente el ejemplo más controversial y el mejor ejemplo de por qué siento que necesitamos un cambio en Ward 1. Número uno, todos queremos vivienda accesible, ¿verdad? Y aparentemente esta zona en particular permitirá posiblemente 14 u más uniones de 200 y algo casas para ser accesibles. La pregunta, ¿es lo mejor que podemos hacer? ¿Y no hubiera sido más accesible si la propiedad se desarrollara con el actual zonaje? Mucha gente pregunta y pregunta eso y dice, podrías haber tenido casas móviles en esa área y el tipo de desarrollo y casas allí habría sido aún más accesible, ¿está bien? Queremos infil, ¿verdad? No queremos que ocurra un esparro, queremos al menos mitigarlo. Esto no es algo que abordaría ese tema. La otra cosa que me preocupa, además del desrespeto claro de los residentes y no apoyando sus deseos para el futuro desarrollo de esa área, es que estamos hambrientos de dinero, la ciudad está hambrienta de dinero. Siempre estamos tratando de encontrar una forma de crecer los fondos generales, ¿verdad? Una forma de crecer los fondos generales es anexar en áreas que sean áreas adecuadas para anexar. Así que si los residentes sienten que querrían anexarse a la ciudad, si nosotros como líderes progresistas reconocemos que esto sería una buena cosa para nosotros ambientalmente, una buena cosa para nosotros financieramente, económicamente, debemos perseguir anexaciones donde sea adecuado. Esto calma esa oportunidad en que los residentes están mirando la decisión que el mán y consejo tomaron. Y por cierto, el consejo de Rostich Kozaczek, que nos impulsó nuestra campaña, escribió no, como hizo Kevin. Así que los residentes que querrían anexarse y hubieran sido una forma para recibir más ingresos para nosotros, están mirando esto y van a ser menos susceptibles de confiar en el mán y consejo. Si estás viviendo fuera de la ciudad y ves lo que pasó en Choya y 36 y ves que una condición que el mán y consejo acordaron hace años básicamente fue simplemente removida. Y así el mán y consejo prometieron algo y lo removieron. ¿Por qué en la tierra confiarías en el consejo del mán y consejo? ¿Por qué en la tierra votarías para ser anexado? Porque, de nuevo, tienes que votar, creo que la mayoría necesita votar para poder ser aceptado. La otra cosa es que cuando estamos trabajando con desarrolladores, chicos, todos sabemos esto, tienes que ser más inteligente que la siguiente persona, ¿verdad? Este tipo de negociaciones requieren estrategias sabias y bien investigadas. Cuando el desarrollador dijo, proporcionó una concesión, que no desarrollarían al sur de Wash en esa área. Vamos, chicos, eso no fue una concesión. Esa área es imposible de desarrollar debido a las rocas, el rostro de la cama en esa área y la topografía. O habría sido demasiado costoso, lo que habría sido algo que ellos no hubieran perseguido debido a que era demasiado costoso. Eso no fue una concesión. Así que eso fue realmente lamentable. Y la última cosa que diré, mi oponente aceptó una donación de esa equipo de desarrollo. Eso no es correcto. Necesitamos voces independientes. Y así los gente está conectando los pensamientos, ¿está bien? El incumbente no escuchó a los residentes, removió esa condición y ha estado aceptando el apoyo, el apoyo financiero de un miembro del equipo con ese desarrollo. Mucha gente ha estado sintiendo esto y eso ha sido el final de la estrada de ellos en unirme a mi campaña. Eso es Choya y 36, chicos. Pasando a Precinto 37. Si no están conscientes de que el Precinto 37 comprende el área del Rio, la área de Silvercroft y la área de Sauaco. Es básicamente el cuarto noreste de Silverbell y Speedway. En el Precinto 37, el espacio abierto del Rio existe, también el centro de la comunidad del Rio está allí y también el parque Joaquín Morietta está allí. Es una hermosa, culturalmente increíble precinto que es el hogar de, como dije, varios barrios en esa área. Históricamente, los residentes de Barrio Hollywood, Britta, Ironwood Ridge, con la cual soy el vicepresidente, incluso Menlo, más al sur, hemos unido históricamente cuando haya habido algún tipo de problemas que se han traído que nos harían daño. Un ejemplo es la cerración de las escuelas en el lado occidental, proteger el Rio. Tú lo llames, hemos ganado unido. Está bien, así que esa área es extremadamente importante para nosotros. Aquí está el problema. Mi incumbente, no una vez, pero dos veces, ha intentado redistrictar esa área hacia Ward 3, ¿está bien? Así que a través del proceso de redistrictación, si mi oponente hubiera logrado, eso habría dividido los barrios en el lado occidental y habría movido el Precinto 37 hacia Ward 3. Eso es problemático por una variedad de razones. Una de las razones que acabo de compartir, con unidad viene el poder. El segundo es simplemente logística. Imagínate siendo un residente en el lado occidental de Silverbell que utiliza recursos en Joaquín Morietta Park que está en el lado oriental de Silverbell. Esa persona necesitaría hablar con el miembro del consejo en Ward 3 si ese redistrictamiento hubiera ocurrido. Habría que ir al miembro del consejo en Ward 3, y estoy muy familiarizado con esa área porque yo fui el jefe de personal para ese oficio. Ese oficio de Ward está más cerca de la Avenida Campbell que en cualquier lugar cerca del lado occidental. Así que eso es problemático en sí mismo. Una madre que tiene un problema con su hijo en Joaquín Morietta Park y esos recursos tendría que ir todo el camino y contactar a los gente al otro lado del freeway, ¿verdad? Y luego si hay problemas en el lado oriental en su barrio, en Britta, por ejemplo, que es algo desde la recogida de basura hasta los pocones, hasta la falta de seguridad, tiempo de respuesta o lo que sea, ella también tendría que contactar al miembro del consejo en Ward 1, en Menlo. Así que hay una razón por la que hay un requisito para formaciones contiguas cuando se trata de redistrictar, ¿verdad? No mencionar el hecho de que no quieres perturbar la naturaleza y la historia y la colaboración de los barrios. Eso está en el lenguaje y mi oponente ha estado tratando de cambiar ese lenguaje, mi oponente. Y aquí es probablemente la parte más difícil y esto va a ser un tema en el futuro. Mi incumbente, el incumbente, mi oponente, no escuchó a los residentes, sus propios constituidores en Ward 1 cuando prácticamente unanimamente dijo a Lane, no redistricte el Precinto 37, mantén los barrios unidos. Teníamos que hacer eso dos veces, chicos. La primera vez hace un par de años, inundamos al mán y consejo y hicimos nuestro discurso. Hubo una o dos personas en apoyo de ese movimiento. La gran mayoría, el 90% de la gente estaba en contra. Así que Lane votó para redistrictar, falló la primera vez, la segunda vez, de nuevo. Creo que los únicos que estaban por ese movimiento fue el nombramiento del miembro del consejo y el nombramiento del mán. Y así una vez más falló. Y así ellos, mi oponente todavía no está dejando ir eso. Mi oponente todavía cree que dividir los barrios y redistrictar la área es una buena idea. Así que de nuevo, mi oponente no está representando los deseos de sus residentes y tratar de dividir los barrios en el lado occidental no es algo que queramos. Avenida Sur 12. Como todos saben, hay algunos cambios alternativos de transporte en el lado sur de la Avenida Sur 12. Antes de hablar de esto, solo quiero decir, ¿quién está en contra de cambiar los modos de transporte, ser corajosos y realmente mirar una nueva forma de compartir las carreteras con pedestrians y ciclistas y motoristas? ¿Quién está en contra de eso? ¿Alguien aquí en contra de eso? Como demócratas, no estamos en contra de eso. ¿Quién está en contra de realmente abrazar la urgencia de luchar contra el cambio climático? Nadie lo es. Ciertamente no estoy en contra de eso. Sin embargo, a medida que hacemos cambios, el proceso debe ser transparente, el proceso debe ser inclusivo, el proceso debe implementarse de una manera donde haya participación y eso nos lleva a una área, nos lleva al punto donde hacemos algún progreso. El trabajo en el lado sur 12 ha, en mi opinión, sido un desastre absoluto. Las autos chocando en estos grandes boulders. Los dueños empresariales allí no están felices, los residentes no están felices. Es cumbre, no está bien planeado. Y de nuevo, digo esto en el espíritu de, hagamos algo, absolutamente, hagamos algo. Debemos tener una mejor ruta de bicicleta. Debemos encontrar formas de hacerlo más seguro para los ciclistas. Debemos animar a la gente a caminar el autobús y hacer modos de transporte alternativos. Pero cuando fuerzas algo hacia los ojos de la gente, cuando implementas algo que no es inclusivo, este es el resultado que obtienes. Y así, usted sabe, tal vez, usted sabe, algo que se ha pensado mejor, tal vez sería, usted sabe, dos, solo dos rutas. Tal vez sería parcar en el lado interior de la carretera con las rutas de bicicleta en el exterior. Pero los residentes y los dueños empresariales no tenían amplias y propias oportunidades para participar en esa toma de decisiones. De nuevo, el incumbente no está escuchando las deseos de la gente. Y así mi esperanza es que podamos abordar eso una vez que sea elegido en el oficio. Definitivamente escucharé a la gente y hacer un enfoque más inclusivo. La otra cosa, y tuvimos al incumbente aquí discutir eso y tuvo una presentación, habló sobre un líder en Bogota, que pensé que era fascinante lo que esta persona está haciendo, ha hecho, realmente campeando las ideas y visión de transporte alternativo. Pero había un segmento que me molestó. Había un segmento donde estaba caminando en bicicleta, creo que todos podrían recordar esto cuando Lane presentó sobre esto. Está señalando una hermosa ruta de bicicleta a la izquierda de él, ¿verdad? Una hermosa ruta de bicicleta y dijo, esto es lo que queremos para la gente que no tiene ingresos fijos para poder tener modos de transporte. Estamos de acuerdo, ¿verdad? Pero luego señaló hacia el lado de donde las autos estaban en grandes agujeros y polvo y fue un mezcla de grava y, no sé, fue simplemente arrancado. Y corrízame si estoy equivocado, pero dijo algo como, llegaremos a esto una vez que terminemos esto. Así que básicamente está diciendo que la prioridad son las rutas de bicicleta y llegaremos a las autos. No sé si tengo que decir algo sobre eso. Creo que necesitamos abordar todos los modos de transporte igual. Necesitamos ciertamente considerar el hecho de que es más peligroso para la gente en bicicletas. Pero también hay familias que están llevando a sus hijos a la escuela, la gente va a trabajar. 也需要被 prioritizar también. Y para que Lane presentara algo y aparentemente abrazara esa filosofía de decir que, hey, mi prioridad son las bicicletas y llegaremos a las carreteras, llegaremos a las autos, si el presupuesto lo permite. Creo que eso es como se framing. Así que era muy problemático y voy a cortar eso. Lane no está escuchando a la gente en el lado sur de la Avenida Sur 12 con ese desarrollo. Proposición 412. Voy a hacer una jugada de que la gran mayoría de los gente inteligentes aquí, o A, votaron en contra de la proposición 412 de Tucson Electric Power. La proposición respaldada por un millón de dólares, y cuando digo un millón de dólares, la compañía respaldada es TEP, es una empresa canadiense respaldada por un millón de dólares que trabajó con la mayoría del mán y consejo e intentó empujar este boom doggo de una idea. Voy a aventurar para decir que la gran mayoría de la gente aquí fue, o A, votó en contra de esa proposición o votó sí y luego más tarde comenzó a hablar con la gente, comenzó a leer y comenzó a darse cuenta, espera un segundo, creo que probablemente debería haber votado no, ¿está bien? Así que solo como una resumen, aquí es lo que la proposición 412 habría hecho. La proposición 412 habría hecho que las familias trabajadoras en el lado sur y el lado occidental pagaran el lujo de las familias más ricas en el lado de la Avenida Campbell para no mirar las líneas de energía porque esto habría pagado por poner líneas de energía en el terreno. Y habría sido algo similar a una regresión de impuestos de ventas, ¿está bien? En que la gran mayoría de las personas trabajadoras pobres en el lado sur y el lado occidental no tienen el dinero. No tenemos el dinero para hacer que nuestras energías eficientes. Familias más ricas y no todas las familias son ricas en el lado de la Avenida Campbell y Sam Hughes. Pero debemos ser honestos, hay mucha gente haciendo muy bien en Sam Hughes comparado con la gente en el lado sur y el lado occidental. Se subsidiarían y porque sus gastos no son tan altos como las familias trabajadoras que no pueden hacer que sus energías sean eficientes, pagarían muy poco por la remoción de las líneas y nosotros pagamos mucho más. Así que es regresivo en la naturaleza. Esto habría generado 10 millones de dólares por año, perdón, 5 millones de dólares por año. 4.5 millones de esos, esos dinero generados habrían ido a la cableación undergrounda. Un pequeño porcentaje de eso iría a luchar contra el cambio climático. Era muy incómodo respecto a lo que TEP haría para luchar contra el cambio climático. Las medidas no eran claras, no había ningún compromiso de que harían esto. Y entonces, mi entendimiento es que 0.5 millones de eso iría a esos esfuerzos. Así que fue una idea horrible. Tenemos tres años para negociar un mejor acuerdo con TEP, ¿verdad? Y así mi oponente se opuso a una corporación de un millón de dólares, ¿está bien? Y yo no lo haría, yo habría votado no, yo habría unido a Steve Kozaczek en votar no. Mi oponente no estaba escuchando a la gran mayoría de los residentes y constituidores que Lane sirve y se opuso a sus deseos. Servicios de los constituidores, y voy a tratar de ir un poco más rápido aquí porque sé que queremos tiempo para preguntas y respuestas, ¿verdad?
Sí, toma lo mucho tiempo que necesites, pero sí, 15 minutos o así es genial.
Tienes hasta las 1:00, ¿verdad?
Tenemos lo mucho tiempo que tienes.
Oh, wow, wow, ¿cuándo has oído eso, hombre? Dios mío. Está bien, así que servicios de los constituidores. Mi oponente no está sirviendo a sus residentes bien. Mi oponente no está devolviendo llamadas telefónicas, mi oponente no está devolviendo correos electrónicos. Me preocupa decir eso y al principio pensé que era solo nosotros. Ahora me gustaría decir esto no como un vicepresidente de Ironwood Ridge, sino como un residente de ese barrio. Hemos contactado con ese oficio de Ward en varios casos y no hemos recibido una respuesta en el momento. A menudo, los agentes no asistieron a nuestras reuniones de barrio y simplemente no recibimos los servicios de los constituidores, la respuesta que hemos llegado a esperar, que todos han llegado a esperar de sus funcionarios electos. Al principio pensé, tal vez sea solo nosotros, tal vez haya algo, quién sabe por qué, pero tal vez Ironwood Ridge esté siendo singulado, tal vez es... No sé, quién sabe por qué sería, ¿verdad? Pero luego comenzamos a hablar con la gente, comenzamos a hablar con la gente en Menlo, comenzamos a hablar con la gente en Dunbar, comenzamos a hablar con la gente en Anita o hasta el lado de los Riales, hasta Abajo, hasta Abajo, hasta Vaira, Midvale. Y consistentemente, la misma crítica salió. El miembro del consejo no está devolviendo mis llamadas telefónicas, el miembro del consejo no está respondiendo a mis correos electrónicos, el miembro del consejo simplemente nos ignorando. Así que resultó que ese fue el caso, que fue uniforme a lo largo del proceso. Eso es simplemente inaceptable. Como mencioné, yo era el jefe de personal en el oficio de Ward 3 y una de las cosas que más orgullosa era en mi servicio allí en el oficio de Ward 3 era nuestros servicios de los constituidores. Desde el día uno, nos conocimos como personal y como jefe de personal, hablé con los agentes que están en el equipo. From day one, we met as staff and as Chief of Staff, I talked to the aides that are on the team. And I made it extremely clear that phone calls would be responded to within 24 hours. Emails would be responded to within 24 hours or sooner. And even if you could say just, hey, we'll get back to you. We care about what your, what you, what your thoughts are, your concerns are. We don't have the answers right now, but we're going to reach the staff members of the city to get you the answers, right? At the very least, that is what needs to be done from the Ward One Office. And from what we were hearing is that that's just, that hasn't been happened, happening, it's not happening. And so that's a big concern. On day one, when I'm elected, I will have that meeting, just like I had the meeting with aides and Ward Three, when I served there. And I will make it very clear that you all, as aides, will have a certain amount of neighborhoods that you are responsible for. You will attend every neighborhood association meeting. If you're unable to attend a neighborhood association meeting because of something that comes up, understandable, you will make arrangements to how one of your colleagues or someone attend that neighborhood association or make some special arrangements. You will answer every email. You will answer every phone call. That's, I will make it very clear to, to my staff when selected. And so that's another problematic area. The other problematic area is my opponent's, my opponent's challenging relationship with union leadership. I'm a union guy. I bet that the vast majority of folks here are union folks, right? I remember a time, not so long ago, that the labor movement, the solidarity, the principles of unity were talked about and regarded as something very special to us. We did more than just attend the May 1st event or the Labor Day events. We did a lot more than just shake the hands of union leaders. We actually proudly talked about our support for the, somewhere along the line, that appreciation and solidarity with union leadership has eroded. And certainly it has really eroded with my opponent, an example of that. But free bus fares, absolutely support that. That's fantastic. I think that we do need to provide opportunities for working families to have modes of transportation to, to work and school. I support it. What I don't support is not including the labor voices in implementation and moving forward to address safety issues on buses. So for whatever reason, my opponent has taken a cynical approach and discluded the Teamsters from a task force in shaping and leading the free bus fares, the transit fares moving forward. That is, that's unfathomable to me. Can anyone remember the last time that a Democrat basically said, okay, we want all stakeholders involved in, in, in this process, except for the workers that are every day transporting working families to and from school and work? We don't want union voices in this conversation. It's mind-bending to me. It makes me angry. It really does. It upsets me that the Teamsters would be disrespected in that way. And there's many other things. The city manager, when I'm elected, I will tell the city manager that you now have a council member that expects him to be guided with all his decision-making when it comes to the work staff of the city, that he'd be guided with union principles. And I will tell the mayor and council that we need to get back to being a union-friendly mayor and council. The city manager needs to be directed to do that. The city attorney needs to be directed, not enter frivolous appeals when it comes to the workers and do what they can to provide not only good-paying jobs for city workers, but be respected and intercollected bargaining with them in good faith and not exclude folks at the city. Absolutely not. So we, so I will, I will be, I will do that for sure. I'm very proud of the work that I have done in the justice movement. If anyone knows me and my work, especially going back to the nineties, I just had a really great conversation with my son yesterday during Father's Day. I shared a little bit more about my, my organizing days. And if you're a parent, and especially if you're a Democrat and a good progressive, you know that when you raise your kids and you want them to be good progressive, good progressives, you want to find a way to slowly unroll mom and dad's past activities, right? And so I've been doing that. He's 13 years old, so hopefully Maricela is not watching now. But I, I shared a few things with him of some of the things that I engaged in. I am very proud of the fact that I have engaged in holding power accountable. And that includes anybody in positions of power, whether it's folks that are in law enforcement, whether it's politicians, whether it's corporations, it doesn't matter to me. If you're a person that's powerful and you have the ability to impact working families and their fates and the safety, and you do not do right by the people that entrust you in those positions, you must be, and if I'm elected, will be held accountable. That has not changed. Never changed, never will. That said, with the police, there's an expectation with the T P D that when my mom, my 83-year-old mom, my sister, my kids, my cousins, when they pick up the phone, because they're in trouble or some kind of crisis, some kind of, and they're not safe, the expectation, what I want is for T P D to respond right away. In order for them to do that, they need to be properly funded. I also believe that the police department needs to continue to move in the direction of, in the spirit of the national reckoning that's happening right now. We are in a very important conversation and it's especially important to me to discuss this openly and fully on this special day on Juneteenth. Nationwide, we're talking about reimagining policing, community policing. We're talking about providing resources for mental health. We're talking about the fact that we need to look and analyze situations and make sure that they're not, certain challenges are not being overpoliced. Okay? We are talking about accountability. We're talking about ideas and ways we can, things we can do to improve those services. I am 100% all for that. But I am not for defunding the police. I'm just not. When the incumbent voted against funding T P D during, I believe it was during their first year, I was disappointed in that. That's not the way I would have voted. And there are other things that the incumbent has done that have been problematic. When Cesar Chavez and Delores Huerta were fighting for the plight of the Mexican farmworkers, especially during the great, the challenges with the grapes, right, with the grape farmers. Cesar Chavez and Delores Huerta used good old-fashioned community organizing tactics and principles. One thing they didn't do is tell the Mexicans farmworkers. This is very important to me because my father was a Bracero. He did not tell the Mexican farmworkers, hey, in order to address your plight, in order to hold these grape growers accountable, we need to be united on this fight, which means that we need to work together, but I'm not going to talk to the grape growers. We're gonna do this. I'm not gonna sit down and talk with them. Even more, he wouldn't have said, hey, as Mexicans, we need to unite. Filipinos, you have your fight. We have our fight. Could you imagine Cesar Chavez, Martin Luther King, or Delores Huerta using that rhetoric in their community organizing? That is contrary, good old-fashioned, that doesn't, that's not, I've never seen that in any of the community organizing books that I have read. So I say that in that we have to, we can both hold people in power accountable and at the same time, be open to conversations at the table. So getting back to Cesar Chavez and Delores Huerta, they did meet with the growers. And they were, didn't fall in love. They didn't agree on anything. But because Delores Huerta and Cesar Chavez had the political know-how and maturity and wisdom to engage their opponent, engage power and conversation, they were able to win that particular fight. And so my opponent is not doing that. And I think that we need to change.
Lillian Fox, you have a question.
I know you don't have control over the school district. T S D is failing kids. Only 23% of eighth graders tested as proficient in reading and writing. Pre-pandemic, they haven't gotten better. So knowing that you're not the school board, as a city council member, what are you going to do to support our kids?
It's almost as if we rehearsed this because that was one of the things next on my list here. I'm gonna talk as a father. I am sick and tired of finishing the school year and being happy that my kids are home safe with me as opposed to celebrating their accomplishments and thinking about what they did in school and looking forward to the next year. I'm tired of that. And not only am I tired of that, I've been tired of it. And I formed a public safety, a, a school safety group and been working with public schools in that. So I lead with that, Lillian. I know you're talking about just failing schools in general. What can we do to help T S D to, to become better and start having more successful schools? But to me, all those things do not matter to me personally if we don't have safe schools. I, I challenge any parents that cares more, and I'll tell you, I'll bring up issues that I'm passionate about, Mexican-American studies, relevant coursework. I do, if my son was not safe at school, I would not care about that one bit. That's the foundation. Kids must be safe in school. I do believe that we need to have a more robust relationship between the mayor and council and the school districts. Sunnyside, Pueblo, I'm Sunnyside, T S D, Amphi. There are models of this throughout the nation where mayor and council has really direct relationships. Some mayor and councils even run the school districts. I'm not saying that we should go that far. But I do believe that we need to do a lot more in building a better relationship between mayor and council and the school districts. It is an unequal situation as it is now. We need to engage more with the leaders in Phoenix to pass policies so that we're able to have more room to make changes. But the one thing is that we can't ignore that. We can't just think, hey, that's the school districts. That's what they're doing. And we're the mayor and council and that's what we're doing. No, both things overlap. Both things, both areas are important to each other. So building those relationships, advocating in Phoenix, making safety the number one issue to, to address and looking at other models throughout the city to look at and try to aspire to.
Larry Bodine has a question.
I have a question about your statement in today's Daily Star regarding what if there is another spike in COVID-19 cases? And you were quoted as saying that you would continue to follow the recommendations and guidelines of the CDC. My question is, if there were a big COVID spike in Tucson, would you again require vaccinations for city employees? And would you close non-essential businesses as the city did in March 2020?
It would be amazing to have that kind of power as a single council member to go do either of those things. And I know that's not what you mean, but certainly if something like that were to happen again, we need a foundation. We need something to guide us and then look at those issues independently and see how they should be addressed on a local level. All right? But we definitely have to have something to go by to start with and then look at each individual case. Too often throughout that process, we weren't listening to science, listening to our experts. There are experts out there. There are doctors. There are folks, our scholars, scientists who have PhDs who have worked their lives, a lifetime in being able to provide this leadership. With vaccinations, we would discuss that, of course. But the one thing that I would make sure to do is to make sure, like I said before, is to involve union leadership and to discuss how to go about that. Collective bargaining, okay, doesn't go away just because we have a crisis. And I don't think that the union leadership was respected in that, this process. So we want to keep the public safe. Want to make sure to implement policies and ordinances at a local level that are special and relate to the uniqueness of our city. But at the same time, we don't want to throw away other things that are important to us as well, like the ability to collectively bargain. Let's not be cynical and assume that, that working folks at the city want to have everybody be unsafe. Let's not be cynical that we can't come to an agreement that keeps everyone safe and also workers safe and well compensated. And, and let's not be cynical in that we throw away basic union principles in order to keep folks safe. As far as with the businesses, same thing. I've fought for businesses my entire adult life. When that modern streetcar was put in place, when it was being constructed, I led the Move Your Meetings project in helping those small businesses. Many of them went out of business and some we were able to save. We were able to help to save, right? And they need to also be engaged in those conversations. They, let's not be cynical and assume that they just want to make money and they don't also want to keep their customers and workers safe as well. So to answer you, I would continue to follow the CDC guidance. And I would recommend that we look at that guidance and have conversations in real time to make adjustments in the city as needed. But I wouldn't sacrifice things like collective bargaining and I wouldn't shut out other people and not having them be a part of that conversation, especially union leadership.
Steve Early has a question for you.
You started off and you were talking about the city and how it's strapped for cash. Then you were talking about funding the police fully, but then you said, oh, but I'm for free buses. Aren't we giving away millions of dollars a month to give free bus rides? And the people that are riding the buses also have to ride on the streets that aren't getting repaired because we're putting the money into free buses? Just a question, how do you justify, you're gonna spend all this money, but the city doesn't have it?
That's a fair question. And certainly as working families, I feel and hear your frustration and anxiety when it comes to the mayor and council spending our money. We have a history, a real recent history, the past five or 10 years or so, where the mayor and council continues to go to the citizens to solve their economic woes. And we are compassionate people, right? We will give, especially when it comes to fighting climate or helping the less unfortunate. Tucsonans have a way of stepping up and saying, yeah, I will sacrifice and give a little bit. And so we've done that through sales taxes, passing, passing sales taxes. And, and we will gladly give from, even when we don't have ourselves much for ourselves. But the regressive sales taxes that we've passed recently, they've been a challenge because it seems like it's regressive sale tax after regressive sales tax. And so it's like enough already. When is the mayor and council gonna be a little more creative and find ways to, to grow the general fund without putting it on the backs of working people? So I feel you. I feel what you're saying. Okay? I get it, right? At the same time, this is not something that, that is a waste of money, right? It's not a luxury. It would be kind of like saying, hey, man, I can't believe those people walking in the park, man. They need to pay their fair share using those parks. Hey, those kids going to public school, man, what's up with that? We need to have them paid. Hey, those libraries, people are going to get those, checking those books, you know what? Hey, they need to be police fired. So you get what I'm saying? So the way I see it, public transportation is within that realm. We should be proud of the fact that we're providing a process for working families to be able to get to work and to school. My concern is how it's implemented. And my other concern is that safety was not fully, the concerns of safety were not fully vetted and we could do better. I've taken the bus for years. I expect that now that my kid is out of middle school, he may be taking the bus as well. I want him to be safe. I want all folks to be safe. And that includes workers. That includes bus drivers. They need to feel safe as well. This narrative of that we're wasting money, that we don't have the money to pay for this, I would, that needs to be a little, vetted a little bit more. And I think that it's in line with our values and principles when it comes to basic needs of the citizenry to be supported.
Okay, good question, good answer. We've got some questions in the chat room. George, would you like to unmute yourself and ask questions to Miguel?
The first question comes from Russell Lowe. It says, in the realm of global warming, largely driven by the energy use and abuse, the council declared a climate emergency, yet it does not seem the council declared a climate emergency, yet it does not seem like it is being treated as a climate emergency. It seems like there is a general malice on the council related to the emergency declaration. They seem to be focused on 5% of the city's operation uses, not the bigger picture. Like with community choice, energy focus on small items feels like tokenism. What items do you have to move the city quickly forward on climate emergency?
Yeah, and thank you for that. Appreciate that, George. The, we do need to act with a sense of urgency when it comes to climate change. It's very personal to me. Years ago, I think actually 10 years ago, it popped up on Facebook as a 10 year anniversary. There was a big tragedy at along the Rio Sonora. If any of you are familiar with that area in Mexico, Rio Sonora is basically where Banamachi, Arizpe and uh, Sino Quipe in that area, right? And so my father, he grew up in that area and the last 10 years of his life, he was able to be, run his own little ranch. It was a humble little ranch, just a few heads of cattle. And after years of working for other people as a bracero in the United States, he was able to retire his last 10 years along the Rio Sonora on his humble little, little ranch. He died in 1996, but the last 10 years of his life, he was able to do his thing. Along the Rio Sonora, water is life, water is everything. And the Rio Sonora is, is basically life, right? It's super important. When the mine had their spill there 10 years ago, it felt like a big shotgun to my gut. And I thought I understood and appreciated the need to fight climate change. I thought I felt and appreciated the need to hold our accountable companies, oil companies, mining companies accountable when it comes to what they do to our climate. But I didn't really get it until that day when I heard about what happened and then the days afterwards. So it's become very personal to me. I want my kids to know when I'm long and gone and when I'm dead, long and gone, I want my kids to know as they're raising their families, that their father and mother did everything they possibly could to turn things around and to fight for, against climate change and for the environment. I want them to know that I didn't just, that I took it seriously. And so I think that's the sense of urgency the mayor and council needs to take as well. And for, so with T E P, that's an example of not taking it seriously, right? To not hold T E P accountable, to not demand that the billion dollar corporation that is, that is front and center when it comes to climate change, right? And to not hold them accountable and demand that they play their part is unfathomable to me. I share your frustration. I could not believe that the mayor and council would, uh, uh, put this forward and not, and just let T E P just go on their merry way and not pay a dime, a nickel, a cent to the effort to fight climate change. Meanwhile, cities throughout the nation have negotiated good deals with their power companies. And they have their, those companies put some little skin in the game. And so what happened to our, so we're a progressive community, right? Let's act like one.
This is the end time for our official program, but if people continue to have questions and you have time, Miguel, please stay on the line and answer those questions to, to the fullest ability that you have.
We do have more questions in the chat room, so that would be great, Mike.
Sure, no, I'm happy to do that.
Next question comes from Bridget Ricey. Excuse me if I mispronounced your name. Miguel, do you have a prescription of your position on reproductive choice and justice in some detail?
I am a hundred percent for women's right to choose. I'm extremely disturbed with the direction that our country is going in. I think that we need to speak out on it. It is unfathomable that Roe versus Wade was overturned by the Supreme Court. At the local level, I will do whatever I can to continue to celebrate and empower women's right to choose. And so if there's anything that we can do locally to continue to make that happen here locally, I will be a hundred percent behind it.
I do have a special announcement and Christina Early is going to be our host at Drinking Democratically this Wednesday, the 21st from four to six.
Hi Joe, please come and join us Wednesday, the 21st, four to six PM at Brother John's. We meet, we eat, we drink, we talk politics. It's a really fun time. It'd be wonderful if everybody on this call would come and we can discuss all the things that are going on. And I would like to invite Miguel Ortega, please come, join us. You'll be talking to Democrats and you can practice your campaign speech on us. It would be great. I haven't hosted in a while, so I'm looking forward to seeing everybody. You can register by going to www.ddgt.org. So I hope to see everybody there. Thanks, Joe, for the opportunity.
And we also have the Democrats of Greater Tucson Book Club. We're on our fourth book Saturday, July 8th. Don't Think of an Elephant. The author of the book is George Lakoff. It's a great book for progressive Democrats on how they can move forward and do great things for America. We're at the Woods Memorial Library, two to four on Saturday, July 8th.
It looks like Susie Anderson has her hand up. She might have a question for, for our guest Miguel.
Oh, Susie.
Miguel, what I was wondering is, do you think it's possible at any point, if we can find money, to add community solar to some of our poorer communities? That's my question.
No, a- a- absolutely. Whatever it is that we can do to provide opportunities for working families to afford making their homes energy efficient, I would fully support, whether it's growing the general fund to, to do that, whether it's partnering with small businesses, or whether it's holding the developers accountable and making sure that when they are developing, that it's incorporated in the, the impact fees so that they pay their, their fair share. We're not going to do that by, like my incumbent did, is siding with a billion dollar corporation and trying to push forward 412. That's not how we're going to do it. We're not going to do it by removing a condition and accepting money from a developer. That's not how we're going to do it. We have to do it in a way that we stand firm as Democrats and look for that money, find that money, make sure that development pays their way. So we incorporate a good, solid the climate fighting, environmental friendly methods to make our working families, folks able to pay, to, to, to afford, to be energy efficient.
Barbara, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Hi, Miguel, it's really hot and it's been hot for a while and it's really dangerous. And I'd like to know how you propose that we deal with extreme heat in your district as well as in our community to protect people. Not only people living in their homes and there could be a power outage or people, workers or, or working outside in this heat and so on and so forth. But heat deaths are on the rise in the state and we need to do something about it. So how would you approach that?
It, it's no longer about comfort only.
Oh, yeah.
There, there used to be a time we would talk about, now we talk about like, oh, it's so hot. Oh my God, so uncomfortable. Oh, can't wait for October. Now it's not, can't wait till December. It, it's no longer about feeling comfortable. It's no longer about, can I get a little shade? It's no longer, oh my gosh, we joke about we don't have air conditioning in our car or our homes. Now it's a, a matter of life and death. Okay, and we have working people who are out there, uh, in the sun all day long and not even working early in the morning and get off at two o'clock saves them from the dangers of working in extreme heat. Okay, so to me, whatever it is that we can do to follow national trends in protecting workers, not just workers, construction workers and transportation workers who are out there, but also working families and how they are surviving this heat. So I would look at models throughout the nation. I know that there's policies out there that require for certain increase in breaks, making sure that folks are hydrated, making sure that there's a proper shade even when you're out there. So all the things that we thought, oh my gosh, poor guys out there. No, it's not, it's no longer about, I hate to be him, no. Uh, those folks are being endangered now. And so we have to be very aggressive in protecting our families, very aggressive in protecting workforce. And so I would look at policies nationwide and, and fight to implement them and take this seriously. Because it's not, it's no, it's not as if it's no fun, it's become a dangerous situation.
Ralph Rahalva has passed a bill in Congress to protect outdoor workers. And I'd like to check that out and we should have that enforced here.
Absolutely.
You don't have a statewide policy and that's what we need.
Yes, Barbara, thank you so much for saying that. I want to say, you said something, I, I don't care where good ideas come from. I care that good ideas are passed and supported. Okay, I don't care. Uh, some folks have asked me, hey, are you, when you get on, are you going to vote with Steve all the time? Certainly I respect Steve's approach and transparency. I'm honored to have his endorsement and absolutely on some issues, I feel like he does, it would be nice to have a friendly other council member in, in, in holding power accountable and transparency. But in addition, I want to say that if the mayor puts forth good ideas, like the one that the congressman put forth, that address climate change, that address helping our working families, I will a hundred percent support the mayor. I want the mayor to be successful. If the mayor puts forth, like the incumbent puts forth horrible ideas like the T E P, Prop 412, I will fight them on it. I think that people are, don't want the Ward One office to be a rubber stamp to the mayor. Okay, but I also don't believe that people want someone just to be hostile to the mayor for no reason. We, we want someone that's politically mature, that'll support good ideas, no matter where they come from, but also fight bad ideas.
Oh, Mike Ryan has a question.
I really appreciated the fact that at the beginning of this talk, you, you praised some of the things that, that Lane has done and her work ethic. And one of the things that she's done that I was intrigued by, maybe even impressed by, was the community budgeting process that she put in place. So I wonder if you have thoughts on, on her program of community budgeting? And if you have any intention to continue that?
Community budgeting, the principle, the idea of having folks involved in community budgeting is, is an idea. It's a concept that is, is a good concept, right? And if it's done in the right way where folks really are engaged, that's a good thing. My concern is that even with the votes, we had a tiny, teeny, tiny, minuscule amount of folks that are involved, right? And so anything that opens local government to more conversations, I'm all for. Anything that opens more participatory involvement by the citizenry when it comes to our economy, our budget is a good thing. That said, the council member needs to make hard decisions as well. Okay, so it's both working together, having citizens be involved. But also if there's something that residents aren't seeing because of the council member and the council member can, and they see a need, that council member is elected to address that need and fund that need and get it taken care of. I, I'm concerned with, my understanding is that the council office has been the only council office that spent, overspent their budget every year, the ward budget. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned that there are some things that are obvious glaring needs that the council member has not addressed. One is the Joaquim Morita pool. There's a tree growing out of our pool. There's literally a tree, a small tree and a bunch of bushes growing out of a dilapidated abandoned pool. And it's been like that for years. Um, and it's certainly been like that for the past four years since the incumbent has been in charge. And I know that we have money coming to the park. I know that the, the residency, there's the taxes that have been passed and that Joaquim Morita Park will be at some point addressed. But I reject the fact that when you go to other parks, um, throughout the city, they have beautiful crystal gorgeous swimming pools, clean, kept. Hemel Park, I used a little bit of street theater, my street theater background in, on social media to, to compare the Joaquim Morita Park to Hemel Park. I'm glad that the citizens there, kids have a beautiful, clean swimming pool. I'm glad that they have state of the art playground there to enjoy. I'm very happy for the Sam Hughes folks. I'm very sad about the residents on the west side of Joaquim Morita Park where they have to walk by the swimming pool. And someone, a parent has to explain to their kids why it is our parks and our swimming pools are treated differently than the parks for other kids throughout the city. Okay, so a council member, while there's budgetary, great participatory budgetary concepts in place, also has to show leadership and address that. For goodness sakes, at least have a sign in front of the pool that says, hey, pardon, we're, change is coming here at Joaquim Morita Park. We're going to redevelop Joaquim Morita Park under construction. Some show of respect to the west side instead of voting to push that precinct out of their ward, instead of passing Prop 412 that would hurt us. Okay, instead of not having a good relationship with T P D and not taking our safety concerns seriously, instead of accepting money from developers at Choyia and 36th and not listening to the residents there who want to keep a condition in the zoning, right? So those ideas are fantastic, but you have to show leadership as well.
George, you have a question and a closing for us?
Yes, thank you, Miguel. I appreciate your presentation. I just want to address the Juneteenth day, what we are celebrating this holiday. As we all know, that Juneteenth is an important part of our history. For those who do not know about Juneteenth, after President Lincoln Emancipation Proclamation speech and freeing the slaves, there were some states in the South that were not participants in allowing slaves to be free. Not only did they not allow slaves to be free, but the slaves themselves didn't know that they were free. The National Guard had to actually go into Galveston, Texas. June the 2nd, 1865, they was able to give General Order Number Three. There were about 5,000 or more individuals who did not know that they were free to live their lives. And so we honor those people who came before us, who were not able to recognize their freedom. And now we give them their freedom in conjunction with the 13th Amendment. Tonight, the black community, we are having a Beyond Legacy Juneteenth celebration at Centennial Hall. They'll be having Malcolm X's daughter and Martin Luther King's daughter. They'll be giving a presentation at seven o'clock and they're speaking and the tickets are sold out already. If you haven't gotten your tickets, I apologize, but, but we will be doing something in Tucson on this day. Thank you.
Great, hey, thanks, George, and thank you for manning the chat room today. Really appreciate it. And Miguel, boy, keep the enthusiasm going. We wish all our candidates the best of luck.
Give it some quick closing.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Just thank you so much and thank you, George. On, on this special day, what an honor. Juneteenth is a big day for us, not just for the African-American community, but for everyone, the Mexican-American community, everyone. Okay, this is a celebration of all of us. Okay, and I just really want to emphasize that this community, people always talk about the, the ratio. And they say that the African-American community is a very small percentage, right? Okay, sure, but the percentage of African-American leadership by artists, civic leaders, community leaders, business leaders is disproportionate to the Tucson population, meaning that we should be extremely proud of the contributions of the African-American community here because it, it's a very special contribution in Tucson, it's way more. Okay, our African-American brothers and sisters are doing way more. Okay, and we should aspire to be just as engaged and involved and be proud. And so, so as far as this housekeeping, thank you so much. The one thing that is really important, the election cycle has changed. Everybody's noticed, the state made those changes. Typically, general election is for primaries in the summer is the last day or towards the end of August. This time it is not. Election Day is August 1st. However, early ballots will be received in households the first week of July. However, early ballots will be received in households the first week of July. Okay, which is weeks away. Again, I want to emphasize, you will be receiving your ballots in just a few weeks, two or three weeks, the first week of July, and it's an all male election. Okay, so definitely want you all to know that. For our campaign, if you want to get involved, we need folks to knock on doors and we need to raise money. If we raise the right amount of money and if we knock on the doors we need to knock on, we will win. And so if you want a voice that is about union principles, is one voice that represents residents, that is inclusive, right? And that fights the powerful and protects you and stands up for you, not billion dollar corporations, I'm your guy. So ortegaforcouncil.com is where to go. Every dollar, $500 is the maximum, but there's no minimum. Even a dollar is valuable to us. So please go to ortegaforcouncil.com. And then the final thing I'll say is that we're going to have our next fundraiser at Rolle's on South 12th Avenue. And so we're going to talk a lot about small businesses, we're going to talk about minority owned businesses, our vision for South 12th and our continuing vision for Ward One and all working families for Ward One and the entire Tucson. So thank you so much, Democrats of Greater Tucson. I applaud all the things you all do and what an honor to be here on this very special day on Juneteenth. Thank you so much.
Well, thanks for being with us, Miguel. You've been great.
Thanks for staying overtime. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming, everybody. Appreciate your time.